Collin County. Mary Harris is running for Wiley City Council, place four, and Scott Coleman is running for county commissioner in 2022. Mary, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Well, hello, everyone. You've probably seen my face a lot of times, so I'm running for, like Chrissy said, place where here in Wiley. Kind of named this kicking the campaign kickoff, changing the narrative really to get your attention. But I just want to also include Scott Coleman and Jacoby, just to make it more interesting because we all live in Wiley. And we're all running for office and we just all met each other. So that will be an interesting time to kind of talk and kind of hear from all of us because we're all in the same city.
All right, thank you, Mary. And Scott, how about you? Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah, thanks, Christina. Yeah, like Mary said, I live in Wiley. I've been here for three years and I used to live in Plano. So I've been a Collin County resident for about 11 years. And yeah, like Mary said, we all of a sudden realized that there are three candidates in Wiley and we, that got us excited. And we started talking to each other about our ideas and why we're running. And so, so yeah, I'm just a big political nerd. I'm happy to be here today because that's what we're going to be talking about. But thanks for having me.
And just to our audience, we will be taking a Q and A at the end. So feel free to jot down any questions in the chat that you have. And hopefully we can get some more good information from these candidates and get to know them a little bit better. So just to start off, let's do some fun questions and intros. Mary, we're going to start with you. What was your first job?
Just so you know, I figured out the Facebook Live, so we are Facebook Live. And so if you guys want to share it on your page, go ahead. This is what happened when you put elder millennials together.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, but my first job was actually Burger King. I was 14. I don't know if I was supposed to be working at that time, but it was Burger King and really enjoyed it.
What was your favorite part and least favorite part about that?
That I could make money and buy my own stuff sometimes, but I would spend all my money and still ask my dad for help.
Yeah, good. And Scott, what about you? What was your first job?
My, my first job was at Sears. I worked at Sears for my first job and I think I was like 15. I was thinking the same thing as, as Mary was like, like, how old are you supposed to be before you work? I think I was like 15 or something. I was definitely 16 and I probably looked like 14 at the time and, and it was a great job. I sold sporting goods, so I sold like treadmills and bikes and soccer balls and just anything with sports. And the paint department was right in the department. So I sold paint and I learned all kinds of fascinating and not so fascinating things about, about paint. And I was on commission, so, so I made minimum wage plus what I sold. And so I was, you know, I had to be a salesman.
Oh, so you got commission also for it? That's nice.
Yeah, it was a great, great job.
Awesome. And all, all of these candidates today are based here in Wiley. So another question, Mary, what is your favorite place to eat at in Wiley?
I love tacos. And so my favorite place is Local Gringo. And so even though it's not Tuesday, they have the best tacos in Wiley, especially the steak tacos. So you should definitely stop there and grab some food.
Yeah, I love their breakfast also. They have good breakfast tacos. And Scott, same question for you. What's your favorite place to eat at in Wiley?
That's a really, really hard question. So when, when we moved from Plano, I was, that was what I was worried about. I loved, Wiley looked like a beautiful place to live, but Plano has such good, good food. I was really worried that, that there wouldn't be as much good food like Mama's in Plano and Salsa's in Plano, like such good food. But there's so many, so I like Mexican food the most. And there's like several, several good Mexican food places like, like what Mary mentioned, Local Gringos and then La Jolla is really good and Frankie's. And then I like burgers too. And there's like several burger, good burger places like Meteor. And then I love barbecue too. So there's bowls downtown and all kinds of barbecue places. So I don't know, I love to eat and I am happy in Wiley eating all the time. That's what I like to do. That's one of my hobbies.
Yeah, me too. That's great. All right, Mary, we're going to start with you. Why do you want to run for Wiley City Council?
So I've always had a strong love and passion for community service. I'm the example of what America is all about because I built myself up by my bootstraps. So I want to inspire my community, particularly the youth through example and leadership. As a mediator and a go getter, I will strive to ensure Wiley's national attention reflects its ideals and morals shared throughout the diverse city, regardless of the race, gender, religion, or politics. And so now more than ever, I think we must come together. And as you see on my website, I believe we, the people Wiley, can achieve more together than any individual, any individual can do alone, which we're doing now.
Yeah, that's great.
Because if it was just me and you, this call would probably be a little bit boring.
Yeah. Well, and I also want to let people know who are watching in on Facebook Live that you can also submit any questions for our candidates to answer at the end of this. And Scott, I want to switch over to you. Why do you want to be a commissioner in Collin County?
Yeah, thanks, Christina. Yeah, I mean, I grew up in a very different like childhood than Mary. It's interesting that we've met. I mean, I grew up in, you know, very, a lot, a lot of privilege in my, in my life. But I also grew up with service in my family, like just, just the urge to serve. And that, that's been in my, in my family. That was kind of part of my upbringing, what I was encouraged to do. And, and over the last year, I've just seen a lot of frustration with people with, with what the government is supposed to be in charge of as far as the state and county and local areas. Particularly with COVID, that was been, that's been a huge story, like going on exactly a year now, like since last March. And the county commissioners have just not taken care of our residents. They just haven't and people have been really frustrated. First, it was the confusing messages about COVID. You know, are we supposed to wear masks? Are we not? Is it, what are the safety measures? What are we supposed to do? And then all along, I think, you know, we knew that the vaccine was going to come along, but then once the vaccines started coming out, there seemed to be no plan. And it turns out there, there is no plan from the county commissioners. And all along, the county commissioners have basically just sort of just delegated it back to the cities, which the cities are doing an amazing job. You have Allen Fire Department and Wiley Fire Department are doing an unbelievable job in the cities for, on COVID. And they're, and they're doing everything because the county government just said, you know, we're not, we're not really interested in helping out with this. We're just going to pass it on. And that's, that's not what we're paying them for, frankly. And that's not what, what we should expect out of them. And so that was the main reason. I think, I think other, other issues are going to come along with the economy and the recovery from this crisis and how we recover, how we help small businesses and people recover from it. You know, I think it's going to, I think this is going to be a big issue over the next year or so.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and Mary, what do you think is the single most compelling issue for Wiley?
Well, as you know, which is probably the reason why we're here. Wiley is one of the fastest growing cities in the U.S. And can you believe that the growth since 2000 has increased by 230%? But the good thing is that we are ranked as one of the safest cities and the best cities for young families, i.e. us and other people. With an average household of the age of 33, I'm 34, and the child size of three. Well, if you include Ms. Keisha, a seven month old Rock Waller, then you know, we're that size. And so one of the things is, you know, people are moving to Wiley for the hometown appeal. That's part of the reason why I'm here. And so as you can see, I plan to preserve, plan and prosper. We need to ensure that we plan, preserve and prosper. We need to continue the city's example and embrace the growth and prosperity without sacrificing this hometown appeal.
Yeah, absolutely. And Scott, I'm going to come back over to you. Why is the commissioner's race important in relation to the other local races? And especially spell it out for people who aren't familiar with what a county commissioner actually does.
Yeah, the, the county commissioner runs the, runs the county for, for safety and for transportation. So they help with roads and transportation with the county and they also help with health. So they're in charge of county health. And so a lot of, a lot of the counties throughout Texas have done a great job with, with, with the health in the last year and really helping residents get vaccinated and helping with the safety. Unfortunately, Collin County is not one of those, is not one of those counties. And so it's, it's really, really important for this, that people understand that all these frustrations stem from, from the county first. And, and what the cities have done in Collin County is just step up and do a lot of the job. They, they started running their own vaccination sites and they're, they signed up to be, to be a vaccination hub. And they've just stepped up and done, you know, a really, really good job. And in other counties, the counties worked with the cities. They worked together. And so that's what I want to do. I mean, I think, I think there's going to be a lot of other issues like in the economy and in jobs and in transportation, where I want to work with the cities. I don't want, I don't want the cities just, you know, to be angry with the county because they, because they, you know, just don't feel like helping or supporting them. The counties and the cities should be partners in all those topics. So when it comes to how safe for people in the county, how, you know, how safe do families feel? How's, how are the roads doing? Is there too much traffic? And, and help, you know, how, how fast can we, how fast can we vaccinate everybody? How fast can we get everyone vaccinated so that we're all healthy? And, and how can we stay safe in the meantime? How can we all work together to wear masks continuously until it's safe not to do so? And that's, those are the kind of partnerships that cities and counties need to have, you know, together. That's what they need to do together as, as a team. And if we had done that, I think we'd be in a better position right now. And so that, I really want to bring the, the trust back to the, back to the county government and through the cities. And when Mary talks about, you know, preserving and prospering, you know, that, that takes a lot of working together and trust. And so, you know, a city council member like Mary Harris deserves to ask that from the county, to work with the county that they, that they, as the city can, can trust. And so that's what, that's what I want to do.
Excellent, thank you. And Mary, back over to you. If you were awarded grant money, what would you spend it on?
Something to do. You know, I would work to draw business to Wiley that were all for activities for the entire community. This would boost both the commercial revenue and the sales tax revenue. You know, we don't want our residents to have to leave the city for a night on the town or a family night out. You know, like I did have to do yesterday, I went to Plano, but came back. But you know, by bringing in more entertainment and attractions to our community, we will keep revenue within Wiley. And while lowering residential property tax and increasing our prosperity.
Yeah, great. And Scott, a question for you. How can city and county governments, I know you kind of touched on this, how important their relationship is, but how can city and county governments work better together on projects that benefit the community or residents that will really impact the residents?
Yeah, there's, there's lots of ways. I mean, certainly for, for the health, we've already talked about that a lot, but going, going into the future and going into the recovery, the county governments can do a lot with the cities. You know, every, every time, every time something, money has to be spent. It's not always money that just gets spent and we, and we lose it. Sometimes that money turns into more money because it turns into economic growth. A good example is parks. You know, parks are things that everyone loves and they bring in families. And so the county should help with that and for the, for the cities with, you know, parks projects and trail projects and making cities more livable. That's, that's one way the county can support cities and, and work together with them. And, you know, that's, 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 that's one that I think will, will bring a lot of, a lot of growth to Collin County and also, you know, just increase the livelihood of it too. So that's one example.
And, and Mary, maybe the same, same question for you too. How do you see yourself working with other city leaders or even county leaders?
Well, due to the fact that's my nine to five, it makes it easy. You know, I've worked in the public sector for a little over three years and working in the public sector allowed me to build relationships across North Texas and East Texas. And so I don't know everything, but I do have people I can call and ask for advice who have the experience. And the more we work together, you know, even with Scott and our, myself meeting, it was kind of ironic. I'm like, what? You're running for what's county commissioner? Okay, what did it, oh, okay, okay. And so, you know, even in building these relationships that could benefit both the city, the county, the state, and ultimately the U.S. So I think we all are connected one way, form or fashion, you know, whether we like it or not. And if we build on those positive relationships and we build on those positive connections, all of us can live a better life by working together.
Excellent. And we do have a couple of questions for, let's go ahead and start, Mary, again with you. What is the number one priority you want to address here in Wiley if you're elected to city council?
My main things are basically just handling the fast growth. You know, fortunate enough, I've talked to a lot of small businesses. I've talked to a lot of residents. I've talked to a lot of city employees. And, you know, one of the things that a lot of people are affected about the growth, you know, making sure that our officers have everything that they need and that they're paid fairly and that we plan for all the officers that are retiring so that we can maintain the good ones. Also, as you know, just the community equity and inclusion, you know, Wiley, the demographics have changed. And so I want to ensure that there is something to do and, you know, whether you're black, white, Hispanic, Asian, that, you know, we have events and we have things that, that celebrate you. Because, I mean, you know, doing the same thing over and over is, is, is a little boring. So I mean, I would love to have, you know, see how, what we can do to get creative to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month or Asian History Month and really embrace all the diversity that is here. With the median age being 34, again, just going back to ensuring that, you know, we have something to do and we have these events where we can get to know each other, our kids can get to know each other. We can get to know the, the police officers, the firemen, the public works, the city leadership. And just making sure that everyone, whether it's old Wiley, new Wiley, that we all embrace this, this neighbor focus. And I have met so many people that just wrap their arms around me. They feed me now and I am so grateful for it.
Awesome, great. And then Scott, same question to you. What's your number one priority if you are elected as the county commissioner?
Yeah, I think, Mary, Mary had that word community, which I think is a really, really great word. And that's, that's what I think that, that I would want to bring back to the, back to the people, the residents of, of Collin County. It's just, it's just the sense of trust and knowing that they can have a government that's going to work for them. You know, cities, you know, the cities have, like I said, done a good job and everyone says, you know, yeah, the fire department, the, the police department, yeah. But when it comes to the county, you know, people want, want to count that their, you know, their electricity is going to stay on in, in a snowstorm. You know, they're going to want to get a vaccine as fast as the next county over. Those are just things that they want, that they want to happen. And so, so I just want to bring back the idea that if we're paying for government, we should have a good government. You know, that, that's what we should have, but we're going to be paying their salaries and we're going to be paying that much money. And we should have one that works for people. It should work for the people and people's electricity shouldn't go off and we should have vaccines quickly. Little things like that, simple things. But Mary had, you know, had some good points about, about working closely with the fire departments and the police department because, because they're, you know, they're on the front lines and they're seeing everything for themselves. And so the county, county commissioners need to support them, need to support them more too. So I, so I think just bringing back the sense of trust in government and having people just across the political spectrum from the far left, the far right and everyone in between, just to, just to, just to be, just to think that they can, they can trust their government again, I think would be the biggest, the biggest accomplishment that I could give.
Yeah, and also Scott, you know, kind of bring up a good point because one of the things at the, just meeting so many people is I'm just trying to, I, I believe in candid conversations and just really sitting down and having the conversations. I know right now, because of COVID and social media, you end up with a lot of Facebook beef. And so I think when we sit down and we have these candid conversations to see exactly what the needs are, because I can speculate all day. So, no, y'all, you're paid fairly. Oh, no, you're good, you're good, you're fine. But when you sit down and have conversations with people, you can really dig down into what the needs really are. And, you know, I see it as too, my job is not to shove what I think down your throat. I'm trying to figure out exactly what your needs are and, and use those conflict management mediation skills and, and create win-win situations for everyone.
Excellent. And to, and kind of to that point, what has been your favorite part of running for city council thus far?
Something new. Every day, every day, something new. The friends, I've made so many friends, including you guys. And that sense of communal unity and that neighbor focus. Today, I went to walk Ms. Keisha and stopped at a neighbor's house. He has this huge backyard and he has a little pit bull rescue. And I was like, hey, you know, you want to see if they want to be friends? And so now Ms. Keisha, you know, has a friend to go and play with and run around with. And when we came home, she went right to sleep. And I told her, like, hey, I'm busy with the campaign. I don't have as much time for her as I used to. Are you willing to let them hang out? And he was like, yeah. And so, I mean, you don't see that everywhere, you know, complete strangers who are just willing to be there for you and, and help you out. And I think that is the Wiley way. It, it's that neighbor focus that we have that we have amongst each other. It's just friendship and what can I do for you? How can you help the small businesses? How can we get, how can we drive more traffic downtown? How can we support the businesses and, and ensure that they stay in business so we have somewhere to go to?
Yeah, excellent. And, and Scott, I know your campaign goes all the way into next year. But what maybe you want to get involved in running and getting into the city and county leadership?
Well, I found, you know, I found that the, the requirements of the job are pretty similar to what I've been doing for the, for the last many years, like 11 years. I've, I've been an educator. So I was a teacher and then I was a assistant principal. So I ran an academics department and then I ran a school as a principal. And then I, and then I helped run a district academic department too, and I've run testing as well in my district. So, so when, when, you know, when you run things like that, you, you're pretty much solving problems all day. You know, you'll probably have 10, 10, between 10 and 20 problems every day. And, and one of the problems is that a child isn't reading on grade level, right? So that's not something you can solve that day, but it's a problem you're having and you're, and you're, and you're working on it for over a long term with a team. And then you have other problems that are just coming at you all the time. And so, and I like that, I thrive on that. I like, you know, Mary said that you do something different every day. I mean, that's, that's exactly what that is and it's just something, something new. And you never know what you're going to expect, but I love them. I love, that's what I thrive on. I mean, that's what I've been doing for, you know, for a whole decade now. And so I love that idea of just, of just helping people and connecting to people. So, you know, when we talk about listening to our, to our civil service, listening to the people who are, you know, our first responders who are, who are out there and listening to our teachers and, and parents in our, in our community, just listening to them and seeing what kind of ideas and problems they have. That's our, that's already been very rewarding to me. I talked to one woman last week who, she didn't know her vaccine, but transferred to McKinney. She lives in St. Paul and so there was a message that said that she should receive an email from the city of McKinney. And then she would know how to get vaccinated. Well, she didn't even know that and so she might have believed that email. And so, and so I was able to help her and that was great. You know, that was a good feeling just to help that woman real quick and just help her get vaccinated. So just little things like that, I think. And there'll be other, other problems that are harder to solve, but that's, that's what I love. That's what I enjoy doing. So that's, that's why I got involved.
Right, and Mary, same question to you.
And what's the question? I'm sorry.
What, what made you want to get involved in city and community leadership?
Being an advocate my whole life and also knowing that I have the skills for conflict management and, and finding win-win situations. And probably you bring up problem solving. My favorite subject was always math and I always loved people. I was always a people person. So I'm like, hmm, you put problem solving and people together, you have mediation, you know, let's go learn about that. And being able to help, you know, fortunate enough, I'm able to do it. And so why I'm able to do it, why not? What you put into this world is what you get out. And why I am well body enabled, I want to be able to help people because one day I'm going to be that senior citizen who's calling, you know, Scott's son, saying, hey, can you come pick me up and, and take me to the store? I'm going to need help one day. And so I just want to be the change that the world wants to see. I want to be the change. I can't complain about it and talk and say, hey, I want things to change. I want things to be better. Well, it's time to pull up my sleeves and see what I can do to help people out and, and use the skills and, and help them.
Yeah, Mary, you don't have to wait till, I'll take you to Aldi anytime. We don't have to wait 40 years, we can go.
Well, you're older than me, so we're going to have to like rely on one of your kids. Who's the youngest? That's who, that's who I'm going to start building relationships with. Yeah, my daughter tells me, say, if you don't stop, I'm going to make sure I call a place for mom. So you better, you better take me to Local Gringo or, or you're going to be at a place for mom. I was like, okay.
Yeah, anywhere you want.
All right, Scott, I do have a question for you too, and really in regards to COVID-19 response. With Governor Abbott choosing to remove the mask mandate and it being more of a politicized issue, how will you address or lead the county?
Yeah, it's gotten, it's gotten enormously politicized. It's interesting, you know, the, I have, it's funny when you hear that word, like being politicized or something political, you know, because I have a degree in political science. So when I hear that word, it's like, what does that mean political? But I think it means, you know, when people start, start blaming each other, not solving the problem, right? That's like, I guess that's political when you just start trading barbs back and forth and you're not even, you're not really doing anything. You know, the, the mask, the mask ordinance that Abbott, that Abbott dropped and changed was a huge mistake. I mean, it was a big, big mistake for him to do that. And it, and it made everyone confused and afraid again. And it didn't solve any kind of problem. And, you know, I guess, you know, Abbott, Abbott really can't, can't be trusted anymore with a lot of the things he, he does. And this was just another example. I mean, he, he couldn't be trusted on electricity and keeping the lights on when the snowstorm was going on. And with this mask mandate, I mean, he pretty much just gave a message kind of along the same lines as what I've been talking about with the county commissioners, which is just, you know, you're on your own. You know, you're, you know, pay, you pay me a salary as the governor, but you know what? I'm just going to let you guys handle it and you guys take care of it and I'll just sit here, right? And not do anything. And that's not, you know, that wasn't his job. And what's going to happen with the local businesses is, is it's going to put a lot of pressure on the businesses because now there's a side, right? Are you on the mask side or are you on the not mask side? And businesses don't, businesses aren't interested in that. Businesses are interested in safety because if people are safe, then they'll shop, then they'll, then they'll go out to eat. They'll, you know, they'll, they'll go out for burgers and Mexican food. And, and if, and if people don't feel safe doing that, then, or they feel they have to play a side or something and we're taking sides now and this is what restaurant we go to. You know, businesses don't want that. And so Abbott, Abbott kind of just sold out everybody. He sold out the businesses and he sold out us too. Because this was his job to do, to, to take a stand and, and stand for safety and stand for getting vaccinations quickly. And he pretty much just passed the buck. And that's, that's been the culture of our, our Collin County Commissioners Court as well. They just sort of, yeah, we'll let you guys do it. And, and then there's no backup, right? There's no support for the businesses or for the people to, to, to get out of this crisis.
Yeah, and same, same question for you, Mary. How do you plan on, on being a leader during this pandemic in Wiley?
I think first and foremost is listening, you know, because you really don't know what the needs are until you listen. I think Wiley has done a great job with all what they have, but you know, I'm not in there day to day like everyone else. But just wanted to, I'm always wanting to know that there's a lot of resources that are out here. You just have to find them. I think that is the same for the average individual. So just wanted to ensure that we have whatever funds are available, you know, on a county level, on a state level and advocating for that to ensure that those funds are available for the city itself, employees, residents and small businesses. Fortunate enough, you know, in the industry that I'm in, it was a little bit COVID proof. So I didn't have any issues. And so it challenges me to go out and see, you know, what I can do to advocate for those who do need additional help. You know, such as our small businesses and our small businesses downtown. How do we ensure that we give them the most funding that we can get? You know, from the county, from the state, you know, and even on a national level? Because I want them to be able to survive. You know, small businesses, a lot of them are mom and pop shops. They work 12, 18 hour days in order to take care of their family. Not everyone has a nine to five like me. And so I want to be able to help them and ensure they have all whatever resources are available.
Yeah, that's great. And Mary, I'm going to start with you on this next question too. Even just when I was block walking, a lot of people have never voted for city council and weren't even aware that there was an election coming up on May 1st. So how do you plan to raise awareness about city elections and get people excited about coming out to vote?
I think the, you just got to give people the information, you know, ensuring that even from a city level that we let them know. And say, hey, elections are coming up. If you, you know, want to get your name on the ballot, here are the steps. Here's the information. Making sure that information is accessible online, in person. I mean, if you're like me, I like to save the link and have a printout. But ensuring that information is there, provided and with the information, here are the candidates, here's the information, you know, and ensuring even from a city level that we share that information and just keep people informed. Because when people are informed, they can make their own decisions. And, I mean, there, I have an article about it on my website. Because, you know, in our last election, our turnout was only about 6%. And I think it's important that everyone's voice is heard. But I think it's just about giving the people the information, print, social media. I mean, we have to do robocalls, like, hey, everybody, what's going on?
Yeah. And Scott, same to you. Is there anything you want to add to that? How, how will you plan on bringing awareness to what the county commissioner does and getting people to come out and vote?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a, that's a really fun, fun part of campaigning is just going out and talking to people. I'm kind of an introvert by nature, so I like nothing more, just sitting with my coffee. But it's, it's a lot of fun to get out there and talk to people and get on the phone, go and text people and go to their house and show up to other events. It's really fun to get people engaged and, and people want to get engaged, they really do. You'll, you'll find people who vote in every election, you know, 2018, 2020. And then, oh, there's a city election. Yeah, I think I heard about, but you know, they didn't really have a plan and they weren't really engaged. And so when, you know, when Mary Harris shows up at the door, I mean, that's it, they're going to vote, you know, they're going to vote for her for sure. So, so it, it's, it's great to get people engaged and people really want to get engaged. And so, you know, we, you know, it, it's great just to have more and more people. So, you know, the first step is, is saying you'll vote, you know, going to say you'll vote, which is the civic duty of everybody. Or maybe they can, you know, sign a petition for somebody to get on the ballot. You know, somebody wants to get on the ballot and all they have to do is sign their name. Yep, I want this person on the ballot. Or maybe they want to find a few of their friends and call them and tell them to, to sign the signature page too or, or volunteer. So the, you know, the, the level of activism just increases or they may host a, host a webinar like you, Christina. So like that's the, the next level of engagement too. But, um, you know, it just, it just grows and people, it's But, um, you know, it just, it just grows and people, it's, it, people like it. It's, it's a lot of fun because people know it makes a difference. It really, really changes things and it really, really makes a difference when, when people run for office and when people start advocating for the positions. Um, they can see it making a difference right in front of them. So it's, it's great.
Right. And this is for, um, either one of you. So during this, uh, last month in February, we went through the crisis with this winter storm and freezing temperatures that our power grid couldn't handle. Looking back on the situation, um, how do you think we could be better prepared going forward? Especially with climate change, which is sure to bring more severe weather, possible flooding, maybe more winter storms. Um, how do you, how do you plan or, or what plans do you have to better prepare or get involved with our community to prepare our community? To either one, Mary, do you want to go first or?
I'm gonna let Scott take that one first.
Yeah, I don't mind starting. Yeah, I've got a lot to say about that. I mean,
I figured.
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's, you know, this is a big mess. This is a big, big mess. And, and, you know, if Abbott thinks this is going to go away or everyone's going to forget about that, I mean, he's sorely, sorely mistaken. And I, I used to be a lawyer a long time ago and people are going to be suing everyone all over the place. And it's, it's going to be a big mess when this kind of thing happened and then people died as well. So it was very serious. And, um, you know, what we didn't do is we didn't winterize our equipment, which we should have done. And, um, we were warned back in 2011, you remember the Super Bowl where we were supposed to have a big Dallas party at the Super Bowl and then the ice storm came and everyone just, it was a big dud and, and nobody was prepared. And there were lots of warnings to the state government, um, at the time to, to fix it and make sure that things were winterized and things were protected in case it happens again. Doesn't happen every year in Texas. It doesn't even happen every, every decade in, in Texas, right? But, but it's, it happens and it will happen again. It might happen next year. And, and so they didn't, they didn't, they didn't plan to, um, plan for that disaster again, and it got worse this time. So, um, it's on them, you know, the, 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 the Democrats are going to have plenty to say about what, about what the, the, the state legislature needs to do. And they're going to need to, they're going to need to fix this very, very quickly. Now, it's gotten so bad that, that a lot of areas I know are, are, are thinking of, of trying to get on the other grid, right? Y'all know that, y'all know that Texas has its own grid. There's three grids, three grids in America. There's a west grid and an east grid, and then there's the Texas grid. And, uh, and most of Texas is in, is in the Texas grid. Some, some of the panhandle like up in Amarillo and Lubbock and the East Texas area is not, is not on our grid and they, they were fine. Didn't have any problems. You know, but they were okay. And now cities and regions are thinking, well, how do we get off this, this grid? We want to be in, in connected to the one in case anything goes bad. And so that's worth a further discussion too. I, I, I mean, we, we cannot have what happened this last month happen again, where, where, where people freeze to death in their, in their homes. Completely unacceptable. And, um, so, you know, the pressure's on Abbott and the pressure's on that team to, to come up with something. I, I don't have any confidence in them though, because they didn't do it the first time. They had 10 years to do it. And, uh, and I don't trust them. And I, I don't trust my family with them and I don't, I don't trust my friends with them. I don't trust anybody with them. Um, and so, you know, there's going to be, have to, have to be a lot of planning and a lot of steps and we're going to have to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to carry, carry, carry out those, uh, those safety precautions before it happens again.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the only thing I would say, I, I think it really starts on a local level. You know, I've seen it happen even at my job. It's amazing. You know, once you have multiple cities, right, reaching out to the state and saying that this isn't right and to fix it. So I think there is power in numbers. And if you start on a local level and build up from that, then you can affect change. Positive change that's gonna benefit. I mean, I cried. My heart went out to all the people that lost their lives. And behind something that we could avoid it. And you think, you know, same thing with COVID. What if that was me? What was that as your family members? Um, and so I just think, you know, as a whole, and I get it, right? Sometimes things happen, but I think we just have to do better and be able to protect each other better next time.
Yeah. Um, to lighten it up a little bit, uh, what do you see, um, do you, as far as your political career, is this just a starting point or where do you see, um, where would you, what are your goals, I guess?
Um, well, you know, I never meant to be a politician and, you know, this kind of just happened. And so right now I'm just focused on the city of Wiley, um, focused on my backyard and don't have any plans. I mean, I just, I just want to go play with my puppy.
How about for you, Scott?
Uh, yeah, pretty much the same thing. I, I ran in 2016. This is my second time running and I ran because of education. I was a teacher and, and, and the state legislature had cut, cut $5 billion from schools. And so that was my major, major issue among several other things. And, um, and this time, you know, I've, I've, I think I've given a lot of reasons why I'm running this time for, for just restoring trust in the government and just running it well. And, and making sure taxpayers are getting a good deal. And so, yeah, I, you know, I just, I just want to, those are the issues that are important to me. I, I like to be local and that's where, that's where I think you can make a lot of change happen. And so that's why I'm running. I don't have any, you know, aspirations for anything. Um, I just, I just think it's a, a great adventure to, to do something like this and to, to be in a position to, to serve people. I think that's, that's what I've been doing for a long time. And that's what I love to do. So that's, that's why I'm running.
Yeah. And Christina, can you move to the slide for, uh, Wiley and Collin County? Cause I think this is the perfect segue.
For?
The Wiley, um, the boards and commissions. Yeah, for Wiley. Okay. Yeah, there you go. Um, so you asked me the same question about information. And so if you don't know, you know now. Application deadline for Board of Ethics is May 1st and the application deadline for boards and commissions is May 15th. And so if you have a passion and for parks and recs, or if you have a passion for the economic development, if you don't like how something was zoned, um, there's also a subcommittee for Wiley ISD for the teachers or for the people who like to get more involved in the school. Um, there's a lot that we can do, um, even if is you don't feel ready to run for city council. You know, you can apply, get on a board or commission. You can be a part of the conversation. You can help keep, you know, the people that you talk to in your neighborhood informed and learn a little bit more about the city and kind of be in the weeds to know what's going on. And to be a part of those conversations. And so again, application deadline is May 15th, uh, for the boards and commissions. And I think it's something you should definitely consider. All the information is actually on the city's website. And so if you go to wilytexas.gov and go to the, uh, city governments, boards and commissions, you'll see the information about the different boards and commissions available, that you can submit the application online. It's really easy. And so I would definitely encourage anybody who wants to be a part of the change, I mean, the positive change and the good change, or just be a part of the conversations to learn more and to get more involved in your city. Here you go.
Yeah. And speaking of other positions, uh, we were hoping to have Jacoby Stewart on here as well, but he was unable to make the call. I'm trying to go to his spot. Uh, Mary, do you want to, um, touch on, touch on that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if I can.
Yeah. And Scott might have his two cents too. Um, but you know, just kind of putting the word out, I mean, as you know, we have our city elections that are coming up, but we also have other things that are on the ballot. And one of that is the Collin County Board of Trustees. And so place seven, place eight and place nine say, hey, look, put us together. We're gonna run as a slate. And so this is something, and, and Scott can chime in after I finish my two cents, but you know, this is something that also affects the, not only the city, because we have a new college, you know, Wiley has a new college. Um, I'm so happy that we have it because, you know, that's where we're going to vote and that's where our COVID vaccine site is set up. So not only are we helping our residents, we're helping other people within the metroplex. But these are the three candidates for the Collin County Board of Trustees. Look them up, reach out to them, call them, DM them. Um, but just kind of putting the word out there that we have a lot on the ballot for May, you know, May elections are coming.
Hey, Mary.
Hey.
What's this, Jacoby? Oh, hey.
Hey.
Just in time, Jacoby. We were just introducing you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, everyone. How are y'all doing today? Uh, my name is Jacoby Stewart. I'm running for, uh, Board of Trustees for Collin College, place nine. Uh, right now there's a lot of things going on with, with Collin College. There's a lot of negative press that the school has been getting. Um, there's a lot of been, uh, there's been a lot of misappropriation of funds, um, hiding the lawsuits. Um, recently they fired, uh, their fourth teacher, um, because they speak out against, um, the lack of protection for COVID. We, we have one teacher, she, uh, one professor, Dr. Jones, signed a petition to take down a Confederate statue. She spoke out against, uh, the COVID, the lack of COVID, uh, uh, policy that they were putting in place to rush the kids back to school. So, I mean, there's a lot of things going on with Collin College. The school has been ranked, um, in the top tier for worst, uh, schools of free speech. Um, free speech has totally been, um, controlled by the board and the president. And so me and Misty Erb, me, Misty Erby and Helen Chang, um, we ask that you vote for us. Uh, so we can make this change and make the school better, bring more diversity to Collin College so that all the students can enjoy a great education. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacoby. And Jacoby, uh, just real quick, just to give, um, anyone a better understanding, why is education important to you and how has education helped you in your life?
Well, education to me is the key. You know, education, information, knowledge. It can help you change your stripes. It can help you change your future. Uh, it can open your mind up to, to possibilities that you never thought of before. It could take, it could take somebody who's poor and make them rich. Um, it could take someone who, who doesn't understand something and they can go and learn about a different culture and have a better understanding, uh, not to be obtuse in their thinking. Um, as far as myself, education has helped me to, you know, really believe in myself. Um, I went from, you know, getting a, a trade to earning a bachelor's degree and my master's at Texas Women's University. Um, and that started with community college level. And I think that we have to have teachers who are willing to sit down and take their time and educate these students. So they won't go to a four-year college and pick a degree that they're not interested in and graduate and have the degree that they're not using. So I think it's very important because a lot of, a lot of great people may get deterred, um, by the board. And if you control the education, if you controls freedom of speech, then you can control the mind of the people. And the people have spoken and stated that they don't like their minds being controlled.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, and then just one last question, Jacoby, since you missed our little icebreakers. Where do you, where do you like to spend your time out in Wiley or what's, what's some of your favorite restaurants in Wiley?
Well, you know, I, I really like Locos Gringo, Bringos. Um, I like their tacos over there. And then I love that Country Club Cafe. But Wiley has so many different treasures, you know, uh, but yeah, I love that Country Club Cafe, that cinnamon pancake. If you haven't had it, you need to go get it. Oh my.
Oh, it's so good. I've had it. Do they even have like a pumpkin swirl version in the fall? It's delicious. Um, Mary, any, anything else as far as call to action?
Oh yeah. And so as you know, I need your help. And so if you have time, please sign up to Block Walk, Phone Bank, Host a Meeting Greet. I'm gonna need you for a poll greeting. And also the donations. Every dollar counts. Even if you can give a dollar, $2, $5, I'll take some prayers too. And remember, you know, save it in your phone. Set a reminder, Collin College in Wiley. Early voting starts April 19th through to 27th. And then there's election day, but vote early so you don't forget. And if you need a ride, I got you. Free rides to the polls. And so if you have any questions, I am Chatty Cathy. Please reach out. I would love to talk to you. I would love to get to meet you. And I look forward to meeting. I have a, a lot of campaigning to do. So I'm looking forward to meeting as many people as I can. Uh, thank you for joining and being a part of this webinar. And I'm gonna kick it off to Scott for his last words.
Cool. Yeah. Thanks, Mary. Awesome, awesome, uh, webinar today. Um, yeah, like this is, this is a screen that we should just keep up. I mean, now, now's the time. Early voting starts in a month. So, um, so if you're watching us, we need, we need votes. All, all that we talked about, um, has to, has to happen with votes. And the way we get votes is by, is by engaging our community. The more people we have that, the better. So all, all this stuff is a whole lot of fun, like block walking and going, talking to people at their homes. Um, calling people, texting people, um, you know, just reaching out to your friends, reaching out to your neighbors, the people you know, who, who have talked about these issues that we talked about today. Um, talk to them and then talk to Mary, you know, say, tell, tell them, tell, ask them if they know there's a city council race, ask them if they know Mary. And tell them about them. And then once, once they get back to you, tell Mary and have Mary contact them too. And we'll, and, um, and, and that's how we'll, and that's how we'll do it. So, so yeah, it's, it's coming up. So I'm, I'm really happy to, uh, be a part of this, Mary. And, uh, and I think we're going to do great.
Hey, Jacoby, any last words?
Yes, uh, I'd just like to say, you know, um, again, we have a, we have a current situation going on at Collin College. And, uh, as a parent, as a taxpayer, um, I believe that, you know, we should expect more from the current board and the president. Um, so vote for me, Jacoby Stewart, Misty Erby, Helen Chang for Collin College, Board of Trustees. And we're going to fight for you and we're going to fight for your child's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacoby. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Christina.
Great. Thank you so much, you guys. We really appreciate hearing from you. Take care.
Bye, thank you.
Bye. Bye-bye.